All right, I will call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, July 12th, 2023 at 7:00 PM to all persons interested in or affected by the actions of the zoning board of appeals. You are hereby notified pursuant to Section 11 of Chapter 40A of the General Laws, the Common Wealth of Massachusetts and all amendments thereto that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held today, Wednesday, July 12th. Introduction to board members. To my left, Mark Hanson.
Present.
Paul Pennard.
Present.
Denise Johnson.
Present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
And Larry Hurwitz.
Present.
Our newest member. Thank you, Larry, for being here. Please note this meeting is recorded and broadcast on Channel 18 in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is taping this meeting, and please make their presence known. Seeing none, we have minutes from July 28th, 2023. I need a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Moving along, old business. Appeal number 2023-011, 773 South Main Street LLC has applied to modify Condition Number Four of Appeal Number 2019-005 to allow an additional accessory structure on the property and has applied for a special permit in accordance with 240-131.4E for relief from minimum yard setbacks if the board finds it necessary. The applicant proposes to install an approximately 12-foot by 20.5-foot in-ground pool approximately three feet from the Westerly property line. The applicant seeks to modify Condition Number Four of the Appeal Number 2019-005 to allow the proposed pool as an accessory structure. The subject property is located at 773 South Main Street, Centerville, Massachusetts. It's shown on accessories map 185 as parcel 013. It's located in the Craigville Beach District CBD and the Centerville River North Bank CRNB Neighborhood Overlay Zoning Districts. So sitting on this will be all, one, two, three, all of our regular members. Who are our associate members? Larry's an associate and who else is?
Denise.
Denise, do you want to sit on this? Okay. All right, Attorney Cox, go ahead.
Great. Thank you very much and good evening, board members. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney at Nutter McLennan &amp; Fish, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, which is also the owner of the property. Joining me to the left at the table is Tina Hasiotis. She's the beneficial owner of 773 South Main Street LLC, which is the entity that owns the property and is the applicant in this petition. And then seating to her left is Matt Eddy from Baxter &amp; I Engineering, who's the engineer for the project. I do have some slides that I'll walk through quickly, and then I know Tina wants to say a couple of words as well. So the subject property is located within the Centerville River North Bank, the CRNB District. This is, as I think the board knows, a district of critical planning concern district, so this is not a district that's adopted under Chapter 40A. It was adopted under the Cape Cod Commission Act and by the town under its home rule authority and incorporated into our zoning ordinance. The property is developed with a single-family dwelling, a detached family apartment and garage, which went through permitting through this board, and I'll talk about that in a minute, a pier and hardscape and green spaces. The property has the benefit of two prior zoning decisions. They were attached to the addendum that we submitted with the application. The first one is from 1989, and I've titled it "The Original ZBA Decision." This special permit decision from the board allowed for the accessory structure that was on the lot to be expanded in 1989 to allow for additional garage and storage space. In that decision, the board noted that that structure was constructed before zoning was adopted by the town of Barnstable. And in that decision, the board put several conditions, including conditions that that structure only be used for garage and storage space. Fast forward to 2019, this property was again before the board, and that decision is attached as Exhibit B to the addendum that's included with our application materials. At this time in 2019, the property was within the DCPC zoning, so it was within the zoning district that it's in right now. That decision in 2019 modified the original decision and authorized that accessory structure to be used as a family apartment. In that modified decision, the board included Condition Four, which essentially provided that construction of additional accessory structures is prohibited without prior approval from the board. As this board knows, that is a typical condition that the board imposes on residential undersized lots, such as what's proposed here or would exist here. And in fact, as you may recall, I was before you exactly one month ago today for a property in Ktowit that had the exact same condition in it where we sought to add an additional accessory structure, and that was approved by the board. So notwithstanding comments that I think you'll hear later tonight by an abutter's attorney, this is a very common condition that a board, this board puts in its decisions, as I think you know. I'm sorry for the quality of this graphic on the board, but here's the site plan that shows the property. South Main Street is right here. Centerville River is down here. The main house is located here. Accessory structure here. And the proposed swimming pool, which is why we're here tonight, is located right here on the, right there. So what's proposed this evening is the construction of an approximately 12-foot by 20.5-foot saltwater swimming pool. That's a total of about 246 square feet. It's very small. This is what we call a dipping pool. It's just frankly slightly larger than a parking space, so it's not a big pool. In addition, there's about 16 square feet of new hardscape that's proposed that would connect the pool to an existing walkway around the site. So it's a total of 262 square feet of new impervious surface. At the same time, though, my client is also proposing to remove impervious surfaces from the property. So she's proposing to remove 262 square feet of existing impervious surface on the lot. Therefore, at the end of the day, there will be no increase in impervious surface on the property. In addition, this pool, because it's within the 100-foot buffer to a coastal bank, had to go through the Conservation Commission, which we've done. We received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. And during the course of that permitting, the Conservation Commission recognized that there was no increase of hardscape. And so although they couldn't mandate it, they asked our client if she would consider removing some additional lawn and creating a naturalized vegetation area along the top of the coastal bank. We took it back to Tina, and she did agree to do that. So the plan shows in green, and again, quality is not great, taking about 200 square feet, just over, I think it's 206 square feet, of existing lawn area on top, right on top of the coastal bank, and naturalizing that to natural plantings, which the Conservation Commission was very pleased with. It will add additional habitat and improve water quality. So that is part of the plan that was conditioned by the Conservation Commission and that's been submitted to you. These photos show the location where the pool is proposed, so it's this grassed area. Again, pictures aren't great because of the quality, but what you can see here is a stone wall that runs between my client's property here and the abutting property here, who is here represented by council. The wall is about three and a half to, three to three and a half feet in height, so there's a grade change between the abutting lot and coming down to my client's lot. These photos show again where the pool is proposed, where existing hardscape will be removed to offset the increase of impervious surface associated with the pool. But you can also see how private this area is. There's a privet hedge and an arborvitae hedge between the two properties, providing privacy to this area. The photos also show, here is the accessory structure that's existing, that's about one and a half feet from the property line, and then the main house that's located right here. So in terms of the setback, the proposed pool is, proposed to be located about three feet from the Westerly property line. This is double the setback of the existing accessory structure, which I mentioned, is about one and a half feet from that same property line. And again, this photo shows the grade changes and the privacy of this area, which is very important to my client for this proposed dipping pool. So the application that was submitted to you seeks your authorization for two reasons, one of which I'm prepared to withdraw after a conversation I had with the building commissioner. So the two, the two forms of relief that we're asking, first is approval of this additional structure as a result of Condition Four of that 2019 decision. The second form of relief that was originally requested in the application was a special permit to allow for reduced setback, which is allowed under the DCPC zoning in subsection E. However, again, and this is where I think there's some confusion in the letter that I just skimmed from council representing the abutters. This is a DCPC. This is not adopted under 40A, so all of the case law under the zoning act and 40A are not relevant. This is not a 40A case. This is a case based on zoning that was created under the Cape Cod Commission Act. So in creating this zoning, the town created a grandfather provision unique to the DCPC, and that's highlighted here on the screen, and that's contained in Section 240, 131.5A, which creates a grandfathering for the DCPC. Again, 40A does not apply in the DCPC area. And this provision says that "for legally developed lots that were in existence as of November 6, 2009, and conformed to the existing zoning when legally created, the existing lot area, lot frontage, front, side, and rear setbacks and building height dimensions may be used in lieu of the following dimensional requirements set forth in subsection B, except where stated otherwise." Subsection B is the Table of Dimensional Requirements. So this basically says that if you have a legally developed lot that existed as of that date, which is when the DCPC was adopted in this town, and conformed to the zoning when it was created, then you can use those dimensions instead of the dimensions that are contained in the table. So let's break this down. So the first section of that grandfathering language requires that the lots be legally developed lots that were in existence as of November 6, 2009. That is the case here. This lot was created in 1931. There's the 1931 plan that shows the house and the accessory structure, and it's also been authorized several times by the board with the prior decision. So this is a legally created site. The second thing that it requires is that the lot conformed to existing zoning when legally created. And again, that is the case. Zoning was adopted in 1929 in the town, so prior to the 1931 plan that created the lot. And that initial zoning divided the town only into two districts, a residential district and a non-residential district. This lot fully complied to that zoning when it was created in 19, and when the lot was created in 1931. It was a residential district. It was used for residential purposes. It met the requirements of zoning. So the grandfather provision says, if yes to one and two, then you can use the existing lot area, the existing frontage, the existing front, side, and rear setbacks in lieu of the dimensional table. Here, the existing setback to the Westerly property line is 1.5 feet. So that is the setback, side yard setback, that's applicable to this lot pursuant to that section. Here, the proposed pool is almost double that at three feet, so it meets the requirements without requiring relief from the setback because of this section. And I did run this by Brian Florence, our building commissioner, who's also our zoning enforcement officer, who agreed with me and said that I could say that tonight, that he agreed with this analysis, that no relief is required for the setback. But we do have to be here because of Condition Four of your modified zoning decision. And in support of that, I would say that this proposed pool does not change the building coverage. Pools, uncovered pools are not building coverage for the purposes of the DCPC, number one. Number two, there is no change in impervious coverage or lot coverage. An equal amount of impervious coverage is being removed to allow for this construction of the pool. That this is a well-screened location from the abutting lots and from the roadway because of the plantings and the existing buildings that exist on the lot, and that naturalizing the existing lawn area, almost in the same amount of size as the proposed pool, along the coastal bank will help to improve habitat and water quality, something that the Conservation Commission was supportive of. In addition, this project is consistent with the purposes and the intent of the district. If you go through Section 131.1, which is that section of the district, this highlights each of those purposes and intent, namely, the project will not have any impact on historic or community character of the property or the surrounding area, given its limited visibility. It does not impact any scenic views or vistas to the water. The accessory structure essentially blocks that from the roadways, and the pool is not going to have any impact on it. There's no adverse impact on natural resources. Again, there's no change in impervious coverage or hardscape, and in fact, it actually improves the natural resources by naturalizing area right against the coastal bank. There's no work that's proposed within a flood zone, and the project does not adversely affect any of the coastal wetland resource systems, as evidenced by the fact that the Conservation Commission has also approved this with an order of conditions. I'm frozen. There we go. So wrapping up, we are asking for the board's approval that the pool may go into the site as a result of Condition Four of the modified zoning decision. We're prepared to withdraw without prejudice the request that we submitted for a special permit for the setback. I do have a couple other comments. First of all, I received a letter today from Attorney Gill at 6:15 tonight as I was running out of the office to get here, so I have not read this in any detail. I've skimmed it. I do, I guess, have a couple of observations, again, based on my skimming this letter very quickly. First of all, much of the case law that's cited in this letter is case law under 40A, the zoning act, which again is not applicable because this language in our zoning bylaw is not adopted under the zoning act. It's adopted under the Cape Cod Commission Act as a DCPC. And in fact, my firm was involved on behalf of several property owners when this was being considered by the town in 2009 timeframe, and it was made very clear to us that the provisions of 40A do not apply in the DCPC. So any citations here or language references to Chapter 40A, and there are many, simply do not apply. There's also some inaccurate statements on, I just noticed on page three, there's a suggestion that the building coverage is increasing as a result of this proposal. Again, that's not accurate. If you look at the definition of a building coverage in the DCPC, you'll see it excludes uncovered swimming pools. So again, that's not an accurate statement. There is no need for a variance. As I mentioned, I have walked through the grandfathering language in this DCPC. I've checked with the building commissioner, who agrees with our analysis. I don't have that in writing. If you'd like me to go back to him to ask that, I'm certainly happy to do that. But there's simply no need for a variance. We did apply for a special permit to the extent needed before I'd spoken with my building commissioner, the building commissioner, and there is absolutely the ability to seek a special permit, notwithstanding what Attorney Gill suggests in this letter pursuant to subsection E. But again, we do not believe that's required here because of the grandfathering language that's contained in the DCPC. So I think, again, without having read, oh, I have one other thing that I wanted to add. So Attorney Gill did represent his clients at the Conservation Commission and made the statement at the Conservation Commission proceedings that the construction of this pool would adversely affect the hedge, the arborvitae hedge that runs along the property lines. We worked with and raised this with Crawford Land Management, in particular Jen Crawford, who is a principal of Crawford Land Management. She's a licensed architect, and she has her Bachelor of Science in Horticulture, and I'll submit a letter to the board where she looked at the arborvitae, analyzed what the root systems are of arborvitae, noted the setback of the arborvitae from the wall and the additional grade change between the subject property and where the arborvitae root systems are, and concludes, and I'll, again, I'll hand this in, but concludes that it is nearly impossible for the construction activity on the subject property to have any negative impact on the root system of the arborvitae hedge located on the abutters property or the privet hedge that's located in front of the arborvitae. So I'll hand that up, so the board has that as well. I think what I'd like to do, my client was, the reason we asked for this project to be continued to tonight versus when it was scheduled a month ago, is that she was out of the country, and it was very important to her to be here. She wanted to say a few words to the board, so I'm going to invite Tina. You can either come here or sit there, whatever is more convenient, and make a few comments.
Let's see if this works. Can you hear me? Great. Thank you, everyone, for being here and allowing me to speak, as well as Eliza and my left-hand guy over here. I did, I did reach out via phone to my-
Tina, could you just introduce yourself real quick, please?
I'm sorry. Tina Hasiotis, the, I own the home at 773 South Main Street.
Perfect, thanks.
So I did a while back reach out to the husband of my neighbor who owns the house next door. I did reach out and asked him to return my call. I didn't get a call back from him. I texted, I don't know if I texted or just left a voicemail, but I wanted to talk to him so we wouldn't have to really go through all of this legal, whatever it is. I'm a quiet person. I'm private. I don't have a lot of parties at all at my home. I'm simply asking for something to be constructed for me to cool off on hot, humid, 90-degree days. I'm not loud, boisterous. I'm a good neighbor, and I've never had any complaints. So I just hope everything goes in my favor, and I'd like just to ask for that. That's it. So if anybody has any questions, other than that, I'm good.
Thanks, Tina.
Thank you very much. Anything else to add?
No, not at this point.
All right. So bring back to the board for any questions. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Go ahead, Paul.
On whose property is the current screening?
The arborvitae screening?
Yeah.
That's, it's on the neighbor, Matt can speak to that, but it's on the neighbor's property.
Okay. So in order to maintain privacy, they would have to maintain the hedge, not the owner of the property?
We do not own the property where the hedge is located. We have, when Attorney Gill first appeared at the Conservation Commission hearing, I also reached out to him following the hearing to see if there's some way that we can resolve any concerns they have amongst neighbors. That was very important to Tina. Soon as we found out they were there and represented by council, she asked me to do that, and I did. The response I got is that it was amicable, good conversation, but that they just don't have any interest in having a conversation about us to see if there's a way to resolve the concerns that they have.
The, in answer to one of your questions, the special permit goes with the land, not the owner. So we respect the fact that our decision is not based upon your attributes, it's based upon who may own that over the life of the property. Does that make sense to you?
I'm having a little hard time hearing you.
Sorry. You know, we're, I'm sorry, let me, I'll say it again. I'll speak close, okay. Just for your information and for the information here, is that the special permit goes with the property, not the owner. And so when we make our decisions up here, we have to account for the fact that this, whatever, if we say yes or no, that goes with the property forever as a property, not the owner. So we respect your social personality, if you will, as you've expressed it, but please understand that that's really not part of our decision. Does that make sense? Well, that's the law, so.
I plead the fifth. I don't know.
Okay. The other question I have is, is, it was, I don't know if it's in this letter or not because I haven't really had a chance to even scan this letter, but is this, is this a new separate structure, or is this, I mean, is that what it is?
Yes, I think it, yeah, it is a separate structure. It is considered a structure under the DCPC zoning. So yes, I would say that it is a new structure. But we are removing existing structure to compensate for constructing it.
Yeah, I mean, understanding that the, the structure is the pool itself.
Introduce yourself for the record.
It's on, I know it. Can you guys hear me?
Introduce yourself for the record.
Oh, sorry.
And you gotta swallow the microphone.
Matthew Eddy, professional engineer with Baxter &amp; I Engineering and Surveying. And I was just saying that, you know, from the structure standpoint, it's, it's an in-ground pool, again, a dipping pool, so it's a, you know, it's at grade, you know, flush to grade and below, just for clarity.
And, you know, I would just say that that's why we're here, because Condition Four of the modified zoning decision requires us to come back to you before constructing any additional new structures on the property.
Go ahead, Mark.
Quick question. So is there an existing fence that would encompass the entire property, or is there a fence that would need to be installed? Because obviously, when we put these in, you still have to abide by the safety codes.
Yes.
How that goes, so.
Yeah, there's, there's existing fence around the area. The existing fence is going to be modified so that the pool is enclosed properly per building code. So you know, you have this fence here. There's actually a fence along the top. The wall here is pretty close to the property land, is then the privet. There's a chain link fence, which is hard to see in this picture, but right behind the privet, and then you have the arborvitae. So that's, that's the abutters property, so none of that is going to be touched, modified, anything. I mean, all the work is in here. I mean, the pool, you know, probably goes back to about this area here, and it's just going to sit right in there. You know, so you have fence here. This is just going to get modified with the gates and so forth. This is going to come out here because we get, we're adding just about 16 square feet on this patio so that it's flush to the pool. And so the fence will be reworked, tying into the guesthouse here, and then it's all fenced along here on the other side of the main house.
Okay. And with regard to the DCPC and the uncovered pool, I'm not familiar with, you know, what constitutes a covered pool versus non-covered? Are we talking structure, pergola, enclosed? I mean, because obviously pools have covers, but I'm assuming it's not that simple because normally, obviously, this doesn't, this does normally include ground overlay, right?
I think, yeah. There's nothing over the top of the pool to cover the pool.
I would say, I mean, again, from the zoning standpoint and the definition of, but I would interpret it to mean that there is no structure as defined by structure in the zoning ordinance over the pool, meaning, you know, a pergola, you know, that could be potentially, you know, a structure, but or an enclosed, you know, roof area, you know, roof gazebo, that type of structure, not a, not like if you had an auto cover over the pool.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand because-
It's under the definition of a building, so I think that's-
Correct. I just wanted to try to get clarification because it's normally includes for overlay. Thank you.
I have a question. Would the, who owns the rock wall?
Give me one sec.
Sure.
It is, the, the property line literally goes through the rock wall, so it's kind of half and half, if you will. So the, the front side, the entire front face of that is on Tina's property. The back face of it, in its entirety, is on the abutters property. So it's, it's on the wall. I mean, so that wall was put on the property line as, you know, would kind of be-
Would the addition of a fence along the top of the rock wall appease, possibly? Would the applicant be willing maybe to install that, you know, any decorative fence, you know, clapboard?
Yeah.
Again, just-
We tried to have that conversation, yes.
Finding solutions that would, you know, suffice. Anyway, that's my, my only thought.
Yeah, I mean, that was kind of a discussion that we had, and I think Tina is willing to do that as well, but, you know, as Eliza said, that we weren't able to have any, you know, real dialogue, so.
So I just want to go back to the special permit here. So I guess, I guess the first question is, what year was the, you know, the accessory structure built?
So it was, it's shown on the 1931 Land Court Plan that created the lot, so prior to 1931, yes.
Because I look at the aerial maps, and I don't see it in 1938.
Yeah, I, if you look at the addendum that we submitted with our application, there is the Land Court Plan that's part of that, and you can see the accessory structure is located there. It was then expanded in 1989 by the zoning board as part of the special permit decision that was issued in 1989.
Okay. And so when we're looking at this setback, you're using that, that building as the-
Correct.
The building that's, you're saying is, what, three feet from the lot?
Okay. And so when we're looking at this setback, you're using that, that building as the-
Correct.
The building that's, you're saying is, what, three feet from the lot line or a foot and a half?
Foot and a half, yeah.
Foot and a half, correct.
And then what, how far is the, the main structure, the principal structure on the other side from the lot line?
When you say the main, you're talking about the main house?
Yeah, the principal structure.
And from the, from the-
That corner.
Yeah, I don't have a dimension here, but the main house to the abutters property or the other property line, the Easterly property line?
Well, if, if Attorney Cox is saying that we're utilizing the, this regulation that's saying our setbacks become the, what existed there, you know, I just, I question, just looking at the aerial historical maps from GIS of when the, the garage or whatever the second door, the second building was, but the main building is very close on the, I think that's the-
Oh, yeah, if you go over, yeah, if you go to the Easterly property line, the offset there, again, Jake, I'm estimating here because I don't have a dimension on the plan, and this isn't, this plan is not to scale in my hands, but it's probably, you know, five feet-ish, if I had to guess. But I think, Eliza, if you're saying that there's a, the Land Court Plan, the registered plan identifies the garage, yeah, I mean, that's-
Yeah, the 1931 Land Court Plan is Exhibit C to the addendum that we submitted, and it shows that accessory structure on the property.
And I think, you know, go, I mean, you gotta go by the Land Court Plan showing that structure.
Yes, the Land Court Plan will be controlling.
Anyone else, Paul?
Just a quick one. There is no construction that links the pool to the main house or the other house in terms of a roof or something like that. Is that correct?
No, there's not.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions before we open for public comment?
I was just going to ask where the pool equipment is.
The pool equipment will go, uh-
I guess. It's hard to see, but it's located right here, shown on the site plan.
Yeah, but that, it'll be in that, right in that corner, right there, most likely. And it will be, what, you know, I think part of discussions were that, you know, it's going to be screened and soundproofed.
Right.
It's soundproofed?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you know, you put, you would envelop it so that the sound is kept, you know, I don't want to say-
Eliza just-
No, that's, that was-
Lasered that thing.
Yeah.
She just had the laser pointer on that.
Neil, where's it-
Yeah, generally, you know, you can put a soundproofing enclosure around it, so it's not, you know, it's not, I can't say it's down to zero decibels, but like a soundproof enclosure that you'd put around any type of equipment, so that the-
Eliza, can you just point to it again, where it is?
Sorry, Matt, Matt's pointer is working better than mine, so-
You know, the plan was right here, that's on the existing patio. I mean, you know, the other, you know, it could be put back here, would just have to be worked out with the pool contractor, you know, so it's behind the guesthouse, if it's-
But it's not shown on this existing plan currently.
No, it's not shown.
Sorry, yeah, I thought it was, but it's not, you're right.
Yeah, that, which, what Eliza was referring to, that's a drywall that's being proposed for the pool drawdown.
But the setback of that would have, would be the same, but it would have to be screened, right? Because it would be considered equipment.
Which is fine, yeah. And as Matt said, I think, you know, if there's another location, that we are certainly open to having that dialogue.
If, my understanding is if it's saltwater, there's a saltwater pool.
It is, correct.
If there's a basement that's not in the flood zone, you can put it inside. It's possible.
Yep.
I've seen an installation with it done that way.
So a question, maybe to Neil or to Ms. Cox, the, the abutters house, if the, excuse me, the abutters house, if the pool equipment was in that upper right-hand corner versus sliding up, sliding up to the accessory, existing accessory structure, where's the, the house of the abutter in relation to that?
It's right there.
Right there, yeah.
So it doesn't matter?
You can see on the plan, if you look at the very back corner of the guesthouse, you'll see it's the corner of the structure that's shown on our site plan, so that's the adjacent structure that's right there. Again, it's probably about the same, you know, they're probably about three feet off of the lot line on their side, but again, they have multiple structures on the line.
They're proposing to put it right there.
I don't know. May I, may I, I'd like to approach here.
Ideally, the, the pool equipment should be on the backside of the pool, closest to the water side, giving it the distance from the abutters property. If I see the map properly, if I, if I read where their abutters house, again, I don't want to get too far down the road here, but-
So if the equipment were moved, where is their house here?
To the right. The abutters house, the main house is here, there's a, they should be able to speak to it better, but there's another structure here, which I think is just a garage structure. I'm not sure if there's a, if it's a guesthouse, guesthouse structure as well.
So no matter whether it's located here or somewhere up here, it's still going to have the same impact, may, may have possibly the same. Excuse me, look at the roads.
I mean, I also would say that between a sound enclosure and the noise associated with the road, you know, I think there are ways to really mitigate any noise impacts that may be associated with-
And the elevation difference. I think, like, if you actually were to visit the site, and, you know, you can see it in those pictures, but obviously being out there in person, you really get the feel of it, there's an elevation difference. I mean, you have, you know, the abutters lot, you know, that wall's three feet, but the grade continues up, I mean, it's, you know, there's probably, it's a, it's at least a four-foot vertical differential. You're, we're down on the low side, you have the wall there, I mean, all of that is actually, there's already a buffering that's already going on, and everything that Tina proposed to do, you know, she will enhance that. And I think Tina said she's willing to, you know, she wants to work with her neighbor and she's willing to do, you know, whatever reasonably that makes sense for everybody.
Any other questions?
There's no, an observation here, there is no condition for soundproofing.
On the staff report?
I, I think if the board wanted to impose that as a condition, that would be fine.
I'm only saying that sound's got to go somewhere. If it can't go out, it's got to go up. So there is a, you know, there may be some potential, I'm not a sound engineer and nor do I know how much sound it makes, there may be a potential for some sound annoyance with a property, all these properties so close together. That's all I'm saying.
And it does say all mechanical equipment should be screened.
Green.
But it doesn't say that sound. Well, let's open up for public comment. So we did receive this packet from Attorney Gill today, later when we arrived here tonight. So I, again, scanned it very quickly. Is Attorney Gill here? You want to speak or?
Yes.
Come on up, public comment.
My name is Michael Gill. I am from Law Firm of Gill Devine in Hyannis, and I represent the owners of the abutting property, the property that we were just referring to, that is Patricia Carlson, sitting down to my left, who is the trustee and one of the beneficiaries of the trust, as well as her sister Margaret McMenman, who's also here, and the brother Jack McMenman, who's not here, but also very interested in these proceedings, okay? The family has owned this property for 30 years, okay? Parents are now deceased, but the three families have used this property extensively and year round for three years. What we don't see, the site plan, while I understand the engineer is showing just what's affected the pool, it really doesn't do justice to kind of where their property lies in conjunction with the subject property, okay? I had asked Anna if you could possibly pull up the Google satellite image of the property, and then we can visually show you exactly kind of where things are. Thank you. That's great, thank you. So what this shows, hopefully my pointer's working okay, this is the main house for my clients, and this is a guesthouse. The guesthouse has three bedrooms in it. This is living space, this is occupied year round. This area here is a patio and a deck, okay? The deck, this area here, is the property line, okay, and where the pool is supposed to be situated, okay? And apologize for the shaking. Okay, that's where the pool is going to be. This property line here, there is one and a half feet from the, the applicant's detached garage and family apartment. There is a total of four feet between these two. Literally, one can reach over and touch the property, okay? Again, patio here, living space here, deck up here, looking down on a pool here. We do have a hedge, but the hedge is below grade, so as Mr. Pernard, I think correctly pointed out, noise does travel, right? And the noise has, needs to go someplace, and where's it going to go? It's going to go right here, okay? So kind of, that's kind of what we're, you know, to, to get down to the bones of this, I guess the real question that I'm asking all of you today is, do you want a pool three feet from your property line? Do you want a pool four and a half feet from where you sleep, okay? The applicant makes a big deal that, that the three feet is double the existing setback, so that's a difference of 36 inches and 18 inches. Is 18 inches going to mitigate any sound for a pool that's next to your property? I think the answer to that is no, a resounding no. So I think, you know, one has to just kind of look at the sensibilities of what is being proposed and say that, you know, this really is not fair to the abutters. Now, I will say that my clients, their families, have lived there next to the applicant for several years. They've lived there in harmony, everything has been fine. When, in 2019, when they went for special permit relief for this structure, my clients did not object, even though they're putting living space three feet from the, one and a half feet from the property line, okay, four and a half feet from where they sleep. They did not object. My clients have been very reasonable throughout this entire, entire ownership of the applicant, okay? But this seems to be kind of a bridge too far, right? To have a pool within three feet of the property line, within four and a half feet of where you sleep, okay? One of the arguments that is made in Attorney Cox's brief is that maintaining privacy is very important to the applicant. Well, if maintaining privacy is so important, why would someone put a pool right there, right next to my client's sleeping quarters? Why would somebody put the mechanicals, excuse me, right there, right? That's right, that's as close as it can be. So with respect, I think the argument that maintaining privacy is a big concern is simply disingenuous. The facts speak for themselves, and they're right there, okay? Now, backing off, I do have a question for Attorney Cox, and that is that she said she's prepared to withdraw the special permit request. So are we withdrawing it or are we not withdrawing it, I guess is the question? Okay, all right. So I don't, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question. I do think, though, that we should go back to this history real quick again. When you talk about the 1989 permit, okay, this structure was expanded, okay? It was four feet from the property line, okay? Then it became sometime, they allowed a 22 by 22-foot expansion. The next time we saw this come before the board, the property line was, the, the structure was one and a half feet from the property line. That was in 2019. In 1989, this board put conditions on the expansion of that structure. Those conditions were no plumbing, okay, to be used for storage, not to be used for, for living quarters. In 2019, they came back and they asked that that condition be modified, okay, that that special permit be modified so that those conditions were lifted. This board agreed to do that, okay? They also then, even though it was 2019, which is long past when the Cape Cod Commission Act came in, they asked for a new special permit, okay? In that special permit, this board and two of the people who were on it, Mr. Hanson and Chairman Dewey, you were on this board when they came back here in 2019. At that time, you put the condition that there'd be no more accessory structures. You made the comment that this lot is already fully built out. That's very important here. Attorney Cox argues that that's a typical, typical condition. Perhaps this is not a typical property. One only has to look at the lot coverage. There's very, barely any green here. It is maxed out, okay? You have, you have accessory structure, garage, extra living quarters, you have another big house here, you have patio, you have down here, which you can't see because it's, it postdates this, this map, there's a dock with a pier, a ramp afloat that goes into the Centerville River. There is also on the other side of the Centerville River, a beach lot that provides access both to the Centerville River and beautiful beachfront parcel on Nantucket Sound, okay? Why is that important? Because one of the things in the special permit criteria in this district is that one has to demonstrate undue hardship by the denial of the relief sought. I'm not sure a, a pool qualifies under undue hardship. I mean, it's kind of the definition of a first world problem. Undue hardship, we're putting in a, we're proposing to put in a saltwater swimming pool when all we need to do is walk from there to there and we can swim on a float in the Centerville River or go across the Centerville River and swim in our nice beach at Nantucket Sound, okay? I don't respectfully see where the undue hardship is, okay? Now, I would like to go also back to that 2019 decision and ask the people that, you know, Mr. Hanson and Chairman Dewey, if you put that condition in then, when you made the comment that the lot is fully built out, did you expect them to come back here four years later, asking for a new accessory structure? And that's the difference. That's really the difference. The case law that I cited has to do with 40A. Attorney, Attorney Cox is correct about that, but that's because the, if you, if you try to find cases that deal with just out of Barnstable, there aren't too many, okay? If you're going statewide in Massachusetts courts, you're looking at cases that have special permit granting authority criteria, okay? And those are all, all pertinent here, okay? So again, what changed between 2019 and 2023 where we have a fully built-out lot, almost 70% impervious area? Why, why should that be allowed? Okay? I will also, excuse me, I'll also note that with respect to Attorney Cox's opinion, apparently confirmed by Commissioner Florence today, I don't agree with that analysis because we're talking about a new structure. We're talking about a brand-new accessory structure. If we get to the second leg of the analysis, which is, the first leg is, are we going to modify the permit to remove the condition? I say we, I say no. But if we get to that second leg, okay, then we need to deal with those special permit granting criteria. And again, and it's a two-step process, right? So if we're not prepared to withdraw the special permit, then you got to go through that analysis. And that analysis has to do with detriment to the community, the neighborhood. In this case, there's really only one abutter, okay, and it's my client. They're the only ones truly affected by this, okay? That's it. So that is the neighborhood, that is the community, and it clearly has detrimental impacts. This board can find that, and we do not have to go any further with the analysis. We really don't, okay? We can have the debate all day as to whether this is, it requires a variance, or whether this requires a special permit, or whether it requires none of those things. But what we can say with confidence is that condition number four, no additional accessory structures, this board should have fidelity to its prior decision, okay, and stick with their decision and say respectfully, applicant, no. We, you don't get to have a pool three feet from the property line, you don't get to have a pool four and a half feet from my client's sleeping quarters, you don't get to have filters and, and mechanicals four and a half feet from where they sleep. It's just, it's just, it's just obnoxious, okay? Questions from the board?
I have a question. Sorry?
Public comment, just remember, this isn't a question back and forth, but go ahead. We're in public comment at this point, but go ahead.
Okay. So looking at that photo up on the board there, Attorney Gill, is the property, is the house in the bottom left-hand corner attached to your client's property?
This here?
Yes.
That's my client's, that's the primary structure.
So what is the primary struc, what is the structure next to the accessory struc, what is that used for?
That's three bedrooms, three, it's a garage with three bedrooms, living space, two, three bathrooms, is that correct? Two bathrooms, two bathrooms. So there, again, there are three families use this property. It's been there forever, as you can see from that 1931 plan, the structure was there.
I see that. And so, and how many bedrooms are in the main structure?
Two.
Two, only two bedrooms in that main structure?
Official, you could call it three, sorry. You could call it three, it's really two official, yes.
Huh, okay.
But there's nine bedrooms on property, somewhere. Where are the others?
They're not, well, they're not truly bedrooms. If you, it's a very interesting layout inside the house.
They have a septic system for nine bedrooms, and they're assessed at nine bedrooms, so.
Gotcha. Okay. That's all, that's all, I just didn't know what that, what, how the layout of, of your property was, was managed, I guess. That's all.
Any other questions or any comments?
Just like to hear from the applicant if she, if they're...
Okay, well, let's just continue on with any public comment. Anna, we didn't receive anything, I don't think. Is anyone else here from the public wants to speak to this? All right, Attorney Cox, do you want to respond before we close public comment?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of comments. First, I think, I would note that the abutters' property is for sale. I did look at the listing sheet, and I meant to bring it, I didn't. I think they're five-bedroom, I think it's listed as five bedrooms in the main house. But I did want to point out, it, it is for sale, notwithstanding the history that Attorney Gill mentioned. Second, with respect to the condition in the mod, and it is a modified special permit. In fact, the 2019, the title of the 2019 special permit is modification of special permit 1989-67. So I think there was some suggestion this was a brand-new, separate special permit. In fact, if you look at the very title block of it, it is a modification of the prior one. And the condition, again, just to be clear, it doesn't prohibit forever the ability for someone to come and have an additional accessory structure. It says it's prohibited without approval from this board. So you're unable to say, you can never do anything, applicant, on your lot, but what you can do is, you can say, before you do something else, you need to come back to us. And that's exactly what my client is doing. And, you know, Attorney Gill made some comment about how long it's been since this property was last before the board. But just to give an analogous situation, I had a case with you a, a month ago, a month ago from your last in-person hearing, for a project in Ktuit, that was like a year and a half later, we came back, his plans were developed for an accessory structure with the exact same condition. So this is not unusual for an applicant to grow their property, decide to do different things, and come back to the board with the process that you've set forth in your, your permit. With respect to whether a special permit is required independently for the swimming pool, again, if it's helpful to the board, I'm more than happy to ask Mr. Florence if he'd put something in writing for me. It is our position that, based on that grandfather language that's in the DCPC, a separate special permit for the setback is not required. And I, I can represent during our phone conversation, after walking him through the history, he agreed. But if the board feels more comfortable, I'm more than happy to ask for that, from him in writing. And then finally, as it relates to noise, again, I would just reiterate, this is a very small pool. This isn't, you know, a large pool. As I said, a parking space in Barnstable is nine by 20. This is 10 by 20.5. So this is a very small dipping pool, not one where you're gonna have slides and diving boards and a, a lot of noise. Not a lot of people can fit in this dipping pool. And then I know there were quite a few comments about pool equipment. If the board, if it's helpful, we're certainly happy to talk to a pool consultant, see if there's a location where the pool can, pool equipment can be located further from that neighbor's property line. Any other questions, they're happy to answer them.
Who's using the accessory structure right now?
What's that?
Who's using the accessory structure?
I don't think there's anyone in there full-time right now.
So then, isn't it in violation of the family apartment?
No, it still, it still complies with the requirements. It doesn't require it to be occupied all the time.
I mean, the annual affidavit has to be...
They have to submit the affidavit.
Submitted. So what was submitted last year?
Did you submit an affidavit?
I, I, I'm honestly not sure. I can pull the building department and look.
Okay.
But it allows for it to be occupied by her or any of her family members.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we conditioned it before.
Yeah. The affidavit is required that she remains the sole owner of the LLC and the beneficiary of the trust, and, and that is the case.
Okay. Is anyone else have any questions for the applicant? We can close public comment and deliberate, or?
Yeah, let's do it.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we close public comment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? None? Public comments closed. So it's back to the board to deliberate. We have two things here. We have, I don't, I mean, we have this, we have modifying the existing special permit, and whether or not we need to, we're agreeing with Attorney Cox's findings with Commissioner Florence, or we're asking for more details there of what we need to find.
One of the questions I have is, is given...
You gotta come up, yeah.
Is the basis for our decision one way or the other? And is one of those criteria, that it's fact detrimental to the community or to the neighborhood? Is that one of the criteria that we must use?
If we're modifying an existing special permit, I'm not sure.
I'm not either.
Yeah, go ahead, Larry.
Thank you. Just procedural, because I don't understand. Watch, I live on the Centerville River also. Okay? Okay, do you hear me now? Okay. I live on the Centerville River also, so I'm just wondering, does that preclude me from this discussion?
If you didn't recuse yourself, you always can speak up and recuse yourself, because always remember, you could, if we continue this another night and one of us isn't here, you may have to step in. So you can always ask questions, make comments. You aren't gonna be a voting person tonight if we make findings tonight.
Okay.
But again, always consider if it's a conflict of interest, if you need to recuse yourself. Or you can disclose.
Well, I believe, you know... I believe the family owns property across the street from me, too, and I may have had interactions with them in the past.
So if you feel more comfortable recusing yourself, you can recuse yourself, but you should step down off the dais if you do.
Well, I, I also, well, I have some questions that I think are pertinent to the matter. You know, and it's not really my opinion, it's just, you know, I just have some questions that I would like to ask.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. You talked about sound attenuation. You talked about sound attenuation on the mechanical equipment. All right? How do you intend on doing that? Are you gonna use an enclosure, a sound attenuated enclosure, similar to a generator?
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm not a sound engineer, so what I would propose is, and what we had discussed, is, yeah, it would be, it would be similar to something like that, you would have heard an enclosure around a generator, so it's both screened, and, you know, I'm gonna say soundproofed. I'm sure, you know, soundproofing is not gonna be down to zero decibels, but, again, I think, you know, reviewing with a, a pool contract, which I think would be happy to do, to see, you know, one, you know, the type of enclosure, the level of, of sound, the decibel measurement, if it's an enclosure, and then also, as Mr. Hanson stated, you know, there's the possibility of, you know, could the equipment go in the basement? Or, or an alternate location, too, as far as, but, you know, a pool contract, I'd wanna review it with him as far as the distance of the equipment to the pool, et cetera.
Because from experience, the first thing you consider installing a generator or any mechanical equipment is proximity to the bedrooms. All right? That's the first thing you do, because you don't want to listen to it yourself...
Yeah.
Or your neighbors. So that, that's the first consideration, a question I would have. The other is the stone wall. Who maintains that currently?
Who maintains the stone wall? I would, I mean, it's, it's probably not much maintenance. I don't know if there's, you know, have you worked on the stone wall at all?
No, I mean, I think it's a landscaping...
I mean, so, you know, Tina bought the lot from her brother in 2019, I believe, so I don't, you know, she hasn't done any maintenance, but I would say the face of the, the wall that's exposed, I would say it would be, you know, Tina's responsibility to maintain that. I think the landscaping on top of it, again, it's, you know, where the property line is, the wall, you know, the landscape on the top with the channeling fence, it's probably the, the neighbor taking care of it. But it's, it's kept very nice, so whoever's doing it, both sides, I mean, I think that, you know, the neighbors have always, you know, I think they've gotten along, and so...
My, my question is, during excavation, you're gonna have some vibration or possibly undermine that wall?
Yeah, no, the, the contract will be responsible for maintaining that wall, so there'd probably be some type of shoring or sheeting. It's gonna be a dipping pool, so it's not a deep pool, you know, might be a four-to-five foot excavation, and it will be, you know, again, sheeted or short, for sure.
And would the applicant consider maintaining that wall in the future? Not the whole wall, not, not just the face of it, but the entire wall, should something
Yeah, Tina said she absolutely would do that. I mean, it's definitely in her interests as much as the abutters' interests, so, yes.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so, again, what's before us here is modifying the existing special permit, and then letting Attorney Cox and Commissioner Florence deal with the, with 24131, if, if yard setbacks are a problem or not. So we would be allowing the construction of an accessory structure, but not necessarily allowing that it's where it is on the lot. Or we can tackle both and allow it to be within three feet, but then we would have to make special permit findings on that, I believe. That's how I read it.
Well, I, um, I have a, I have a problem currently with, with this not detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it is, if that's a criteria we have to use, or could be used. I think this is shoehorning something additionally in there that's right in the face of the, of the abutting neighbors.
There's definitely a lot going on in that lot, which I think I said in 2019, it's a lot in this little lot.
All sorts of potential for...
But do you mind, just, it's really hard for us to hear with that noise in the back. Thank you, sorry about that.
Yeah, okay. I, um, my problem with it is that I believe it is significantly detrimental to the neighborhood, particularly the abutters, to place something that has potential for noise and lack of privacy in their backyard. I have a big problem with that.
I just don't see that, Paul, personally. I, it's, it's, the, the setup is pre-existing already that they can reach out and touch each other's house, or accessory structures, one being for storage with bedrooms, the other being a three-bedroom, 1,700-square-foot guest house, that they can reach out and touch already. So detrimental to the neighborhood is overreach, in my opinion. Now, is it up against their neighbor? It is, there's no doubt. But does it fall within the current setback? According to Attorney Cox and, and the building commissioner, again, for her, from her words, it fits.
Right, but I'm not arguing in any way the setback.
I, I understand, but again...
I have five grandkids. If they saw a pool like that, let me tell you, you couldn't get them out of there.
It's a, but it's the size of a parking space.
I don't care if it was a bathtub outside.
I get it, I, I hear you.
I got five kids in there, and boy, would they have fun.
I, I can assure you, they are, they are loud. I mean, when they're in use, when they're in use, and this was my, this was my question to the applicant, was, you know, these get used hour at a time, whatever. I'm still trying to grasp outside of, is it, is it more the noise? Is it more, I mean, to look at it, it's, it still falls under somewhat landscaping in a way, because it, it'll just sit there. But I was curious more to hear the actual...
Proposed use?
Not the proposed use, but that, what it is that is the, the major concern. Is it the noise? Is it the...
From the abutter?
From the abutter.
But again, I mean, we have to look at this objectively. We don't know who the abutter could be in five years, 10 years, we don't know who the owner of the property could be in five, 10, 50 years.
Understand.
The road itself causes more noise than anybody swimming in a pool. I mean, it's, you know, five kids in a pool, sure, it's gonna be noisy, but it's...
I think the road, the road noise could also... The road noise could also be effectively blocked by the structure anyway. Now, you're, you're putting more noise, okay? You're adding to the noise. Let me tell you, if they were my neighbor, my friends, and they invited my kids over, poof, man, they'd be...
Yeah. I get it, but that's not, again, we're not here to debate who's gonna be swimming in the pool. It's whether or not the pool...
I believe it's more detrimental to the neighbors.
Okay, that's fine, yep. I, I disagree.
So does someone want to make findings in one part or piece or any of this, or...
I, I just have a question real quick about, to you two gentlemen, which, who sat on this prior, you're the only two members here that sat on it 2019. The comment was made at the time that this property is maxed out, although, again, the permit clearly states if more, you know, accessory structures want to be built, they have the ability to come back and apply, which they've done, so...
I can't speak, I can only speak for myself...
Of course.
That obviously, we, we did sit on that, and that, that is, in my opinion, general lang, language when we modify, or when we allow for an accessory structure. It does allow people to come back. It does give us still the purview to say yes or no, so it doesn't set anything in stone. I don't believe it was necessarily the intent to say for myself that it is locked and there's no more. I can, again, I can only speak for myself with regard to that.
But I, I mean, I didn't watch the tape, but I think we did debate that it was a lot to add more living space there, and it fell under the family apartment bylaw, and as I recall, there was, you know, that's why I, you know, I questioned that this is, that the annual affidavit's been filed every year on this, because we very, we were very, it was a fine line of letting it go as a family apartment or not.
Correct, that I do remember.
So I don't, does anyone have a way they want to move this forward, or propose it? Seems like we have, Paul, though, is relatively opposed to it. Aaron's for it. You seem sort of neutral, Denise, we haven't heard from you much.
I agree that I think it's a detriment to the neighborhood. I have been in a situation where a pool was right below my living quarters, and I think it, it is very difficult, and I don't think pool equipment is quiet, so...
So Attorney Cox, do you want us to vote on this, or, go ahead, Aaron?
Could I ask a quick question of Attorney Cox, real quick? Does, is the property, does it have a basement?
There is a basement, yes.
And would the fir, would the first floor of the accessory dwelling unit that abuts, where the pool would be, is there room inside there to add the equipment interiorly, diminishing the noise? I mean, I don't know the depth of it versus a vehicle, you know, what's...
We're not sure on the guest house. I could come back to you and, and let you know, but...
Just, again, I, I, yeah, I don't know. I, I, I struggle with, with, with cases like this because of the fact that, you know, neighbors are, you know, they do abut each other, clearly, and there needs to be some level of understanding amongst...
Yeah.
Dishe... Sorry.
Yeah. I mean, Matt was just suggesting, and I had mentioned this to Tina, too. If it's helpful, you know, we're happy to talk to the pool, a pool installer, about the noise associated with the equipment, see if there's a way to encapsulate it, put it in the existing guest house, put it in the main house, find a way to move that pool equipment further away from the property line and come back to the board.
I guess that's a question from my colleagues here, whether or not that is...
Paul, is your concern the use of the pool noise, or the mechanicals of the pool noise?
That's what I was gonna ask.
I can, I can speak to at least the mechanicals, you're just gonna have to take my word on this. If they were under your living room, you would hear them minimally. Outside, not so much. In use, you know, if you had a pool 15 feet from your back door, and there's smaller people in the pool, it's loud. It's loud during use. There's no question about that, if it's kids. But we can't determine who is gonna be in the pool, and you can't regulate it, so...
Yeah. I would just also add that kids could be playing in the grass, too, right by that property. Like, the fact that there's a pool, and you have kids laughing and playing, is frankly, doesn't matter whether there's a pool or they're playing baseball in the field right by that accessory structure. field right by that accessory structure.
Edminton, croquet, I mean, you name it. Anything, pickleball could feasibly, two people could be banging, you know what I mean? So it's, kids in a pool, is it, I'm struggling with detriment to the neighborhood.
Okay, well, let's figure out how we're gonna move it forward. We've closed public comment.
So what I was gonna ask is if, you know, I hear some concern by two board members, at least, if I could just have a moment with my client to have a conversation, and then we'll come back in like two minutes if that's okay.
Yeah, let's just take a two-minute recess. All right, we're back.
Thank you for allowing me to consult with my client. So I guess I, I have a question of the board, and that is, I know there's a couple people who've expressed concerns whether if we did have additional information from a pool consultant regarding the noise associated with the pool equipment, if that would be helpful to you and perhaps make you more comfortable with the application. If not, then I think we'd like to ask to withdraw this application without prejudice.
So Paul, your concern...
Yeah, Attorney Cox, my concern is not as much with the noise as it is with the potential use long-term and the privacy and noise that may result from that.
Denise?
Denise?
Yeah, I'm pretty much, I'm pretty much the same. It's just the whole idea of a pool under a guest house is...
All right. So I, I think in light of that, Mr. Chairman and members, we would ask to withdraw this application without prejudice.
Okay. I'll make a motion to withdraw Appeal Number 2023-011 without prejudice.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the appeal is withdrawn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Cox. All right, moving on, in Appeal Number 2023-013, Terry L. Simpson has applied for a modification of Special Permit Number 2021-065 to allow for certain site alterations. The applicant proposes to increase the size of the pool cabana by 250 square feet from 1,542 square feet to 1,792 square feet, adding 128 square feet to the rear deck and modify a portion of the paved driveway to gravel. The subject property is located at 531 South Main Street, Centerville, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessors Map 206. It's parcel 069. It's located in the Craigville Beach District, CBD, and the Craigville River North Bank CRNB overlay zoning district. Attorney Schilling, whenever you're ready.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, sitting on this will be our regular members. And Larry, are you okay to sit on this, or, okay. I'll have Larry sit on this.
Good evening. My name is Theodore Ray Schilling. I'm from Osterville. And this project is...
Hold on, Attorney Schilling, can you just turn that microphone on, or you have to get real close to it if the light's on? I don't know.
The green light's on. Is that better?
That's better.
My name is Theodore Ray Schilling. I'm attorney representing Terry L. Simpson, trustee of the Bloomis Trust. Property is at 531 South Main Street in Centerville. Today I have with me Ron Walsh from Kendall Walsh Construction and John O'Day from Sullivan Engineering and Consulting. We're seeking a modification of Special Permit 2021-65. The main reason we're here is because of ground cover. We had some modifications to the plan and a small deck at the back of the house, and that created a change in ground cover, which was...
Can you just speak up a little bit? We're having a little hard time hearing you. Sorry.
Right into the mic, right into the front of the mic, there.
Should I start all over or not?
No, you're okay.
Anyway, I believe John Sullivan can explain that we're gonna wind up with less total ground coverage than we had on the first permit, which is a nice thing. So that's, that's the main reason we're here. And they can, he can explain to you the exact measurements and how that works out. And Ron's here to show you, to explain the building and any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Schilling. Does anyone on the board have any questions regarding this?
Well, I mean, what's the issue with the ground coverage?
Excuse me?
What's the issue with the ground coverage?
It, well, we had modification to the pool, the patio and the cabana, and that, that caused a change in ground, slight change in ground cover as well as in addition to the small deck to the rear of the house, so...
But it still meets the criteria, whether it...
It meets the criteria, yeah.
It's a revised plan from, from what had been originally approved, but still meets all of the setbacks and coverages and buildings.
Is that microphone on? I don't know, we're having really bad problems.
It's green, sorry. Anything?
Don't believe it.
Yeah, I know, sorry. So yes, no, the, the structure was shown on the original plan. It wasn't, didn't need any special permit relief originally, but it was part of the house project, which was within the setbacks. So this is just a change in the footprint or revision to that cabana footprint, but doesn't impact any of the allowances would otherwise be allowed, structure in this district.
Is this because there's a modification to...
The modification of an existing...
Of an existing special permit?
Special permit.
Okay.
So we're still within our setbacks. We're still within our lot coverage. It's really just...
There's no issue with historic or conservation, so...
I don't have any other questions. Any other questions?
No.
All right, so we can open for public comment. I don't, we didn't receive anything on this from Anna, correct? So we did not receive any comments. Anyone here to speak? No. I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so public comment's closed. Back to the board to make findings or deliberate. I mean, I think it's relative, this one, this one is more straightforward. So if someone wants to make findings, I mean, unless you have other, you know, thoughts or questions.
I just want to quickly go over this real quick. So, description of the proposed additional work at 531 Main Street, Centerville, Terry Simpson, trustee, blah, blah, blah. The size of the proposed pool cabana, which was not the subject of the special permit but was shown on the site plan, has increased by 250 square feet. Correct? Yep. The proposed deck has been added to the rear of the dwelling, which was the subject of a special permit because the existing house did not meet the required front yard setback to the paper road. Proposed deck has been added. So was that part of the original site plan, or...
Just introduce yourself for the record.
I gotta make sure my green light's on.
Can you introduce yourself, sorry, real quick?
My name's Ron Walsh from Kendall Walsh Construction. There's an existing porch that is on that that you all approved, and we want to add a 10 by 17 section to that porch.
So it's changing what's in, is not meeting the setback and making it to area larger?
Correct.
But it, so there are pretty...
So they are expanding.
Yeah, there are significant changes to this initial permit that was permitted by this board?
Yes.
Correct. So I don't, I think we're a little...
Yeah.
Rushed, in my opinion, and running right to findings without understanding exactly what's happening here. So going on real quick, a portion of the paved driveway located to the southeast of the garage is now changed to gravel and not paved.
But we weren't asked to give, well, were we asked to give relief? I guess we're, we're not being asked to give setback relief. We're asking to be given size of the rear deck at 128 feet, square feet to the rear deck. So there's nothing that that's within the setbacks, but it is within the setbacks, you're telling us now?
No, no, it's not within the setbacks.
Maybe they'll bring the, the site plans up for you, but...
On this, Jake, on this, sorry, Mr. Sherman.
We can point out where this deck is.
Is that where the deck is?
Yeah.
Right here, is that within the setback?
On the cabana?
Or is that...
Proposed deck. I don't think that's within the setback, but I don't know. I'm not an engineer.
So on the southeast side of the house, there was a kind of wraparound porch approved.
You have a, is there, is the pointer available? My chance, it's hard to see all that.
Oh, excuse me.
No, I don't know.
I'm starting with the deck at the main house.
Yeah, down, down here?
Right.
Right there.
That's correct.
Correct.
So the, the wraparound porch was approved, and that corner of the building...
Correct.
Yes.
So you're talking about this piece here?
Nope, that was already approved and built. That's, that little bump out there.
Correct.
Give it to him.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
There you go.
It bothers my mind.
So do we determine if that was encroaching on the setback, or it's...
So the southernmost probably two feet of that also fall within the setback to the paper right-of-way, which the house is already within. So if the, I, I don't know if the relief was already granted to the house and the porch, this wouldn't be further relief, but, as it's much further away than those structures, but a, a portion of that, you know, roughly two by 10...
Yes.
Would be still within that front yard setback also.
I still don't see where it is. I'm not...
They gotta indicate it better where it is. Can I, yeah. I can't.
Oops. So this right here is a right-of-way, and there's a 20-foot setback shown to it, which is labeled right there. And so this little, basically only where my dot is right now would be within the front yard setback. The slice of it, the remaining 15 feet of it is outside of the setback.
So why can't the, why can't the deck be moved a foot? I mean, what, what's the issue here? To get it out of the setback?
It could.
I think it could. I mean, that's not what...
It could.
I mean, they still have to be here, though. If it wasn't that, they'd still be here.
But yes, we're here because, you know, we were before you before, so we're required, with any change to a plan, we're required to come back. So that's why we're here.
So I guess I didn't read the...
So we meet all of our setbacks. We don't meet that little corner, which, that's my, I didn't notice that until right now, but we meet all of our lot coverages, which is what is important.
It's gonna keep it...
And we actually have a little bit to spare still. So that's kind of why we're here, because we can't just do that and go to the building department and pretend we don't know, so...
It would keep it cleaner because we would have to grant relief.
Yeah, Attorney Schilling, did we, I, I didn't read the previous decision. Did we grant relief for the setback in the previous decision?
Yes, you did.
We did? For that specific setback? And are we encroaching more on it, or are we encroaching the same or less?
Less, yes, it's less, yeah.
Find the, so... The, the relief was granted, where is it?
Mm-hmm.
Where's it? They talk about the side.
5.7.
That's the bank.
Yeah. The effect allowed to be 15, or one foot is proposed.
So, but that's the garage?
Yeah. It's a good question.
So just to be clear again, real quick, so you were granted...
That's what we're trying to find out.
Yes, so that porch, that's, that wraparound porch...
I gotta jump up again, real quick.
Sorry, yeah.
So this proposed porch, you were granted relief?
Correct, we were grant, we were granted relief.
First presented, the deck was not part of your original plan?
Correct.
Okay, so when relief was granted for the porch, where was it granted? This?
All of that, sir.
All of this, what about this? I mean, this side of the porch, was there relief granted for that side?
The porch was shown in its entirety. I think the only dimensions to the lot line shown were at the, at the closest point, but the porch, the wraparound, has not changed since the originally approved plans.
Again, my question is whether or not the proposed deck is going to encroach upon setbacks, and then, and it appears like we've determined that it is by a foot or so. So it's possible the deck just slides back a foot?
And the answer's yes.
This way?
Yes.
If that's what happened, right? And then again, what... And then, real quick, just for confirmation about the pool cabana increasing the size, I see proposed cabana listed up in the top corner there.
Correct.
Was there dimensional relief granted for that?
There was no dimensional, there was no dimensional building coverage, lot coverage, relief required for the project.
And the additional 200 square feet will not change any of those? You won't come into lot coverage?
Not. Down in the bottom-left corner of the plan is a whole lot coverage calculations, and we even in that kind of separated out the, what these additional changes are so that it was, is easy to track.
Okay, yeah, gotcha. Yep, I'm taking, I'm...
Yeah, I, I can't pull up the decision, but the, the notice on the 2021-065 does not, does not reference as dimensional relief, expansion alteration of uses of structure, dimensional relief. So maybe it was, it was on a setback.
Would you like to see it? I have a copy.
That don't, that was not included in our packet, the decision. Okay. Lot coverage, lot coverage.
Here's the big one.
Where's the setback? Where's the setback? Addition is setback, addition to the top of coastal bank. 15 feet where one foot is proposed. Where's one foot?
So the-
Is the front.
Here's the setback.
No, no, that, that's conservation.
There's, there's two, there's two lines along there. There's one that you should be able to trace all the way back from here. That's 20-foot setback again. And it goes down, the darker one's actually the conservation buffer zone. But there's a lighter line in there also. It's really, just, doesn't even clip the whole south side. It just hits the corner. I could have highlighted it.
It's probably a foot and a half.
It's a foot, according to this.
Yeah.
What is, what's this dotted line about?
That's the, the 50-foot buffer for conservation.
50-foot buffer for conservation?
Yeah, see the 50-foot buffer line? That's the buffer, and that's the setback.
And the, but the, the conservation buffer line has no bearing on placement of the deck at all?
Okay, so that, but so the, the, what was that name of that line again? I'm sorry, the conservation line? Yep, and so putting the deck over the top of that doesn't come into play or does it? I don't, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question. And it doesn't really matter, I guess. Okay. They were fine with it.
And, and-
They will have to sign off on it, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Overall, the project resulted in a reduction in the 50-foot buffer. Even with this additional add-on, we're still a reduction in the 50-foot buffer from some of the other changes on the site.
And, and again, I, I just, without looking at the details, what's the, what's the dimensions of the deck? Was it, was it written in the-
Where one foot is proposed. I don't know what that is.
Add 128 square feet to the rear deck.
Where was the paper?
I don't, again. But the application says, the applicant proposes to increase the size of the pool cabana by 250 square feet from 1542 to 1792. Add 128 square feet to the rear deck. Is the deck, the deck's pre-existing?
Is it constructed at this point?
Yes, it is.
It's already there.
It's there. It was approved under this special permit, and it's under construction and it exists. The, the six-foot wraparound, the porch.
The porch, the porch is there.
The porch is there.
The deck is not. That's correct.
Okay, well, again, I'm just reading what the, what-
I'm trying to-
Yeah, I'm just reading what the applicant says, and it says to add 100 square feet to the rear deck. Should it said rear porch? Sure. I mean, that's, yeah, okay, gotcha. And so is it elevated or it's on the same plane as the porch?
Same plane.
Same plane. It just juts out off the porch.
10 foot seven by 17 foot three.
10 foot seven by 17, okay, so very close to the pre-proposed pool. No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm one, remember the dimensions, that's all. Just trying to get a bead on the dimensions.
I mean, do you guys have clarity here? The, the proposed deck is inside the 20-foot front building setback. There was no deck on the original proposal, this, right? This was not, this is not referencing the deck.
Correct.
That's referencing the porch.
Yeah, so the application, the application, it should say porch instead of deck, which is verbiage.
Correct.
Even so, we've, we've did-
It should say construct a deck, not expand, right?
Yeah.
Well, it is on the same plane, it'll be a continuation of it.
So do we, we close public comment?
Yeah, I get it. So it's-
But we've already determined that it can be moved, right?
A porch is covered, and a deck isn't covered.
Understood.
So this doesn't have a covering on it, so I call it a deck.
Of course, understood.
But yes, they're all on the same plane.
Does that make sense?
Are there like French doors that lead out from the structure to the porch that match up to where the deck is? Is there, again, I'm just thinking logistically about the aesthetics of-
Yeah, there's a fireplace, you know, an outdoor fireplace there that you'll be able to sit on and you can, so it'll make it more usable where the fireplace is.
Gotcha.
Mr. Walsh, just a quick question. So we, we already determined that the deck could be shifted slightly to come out of the, the 20-foot setback, correct?
Yes, we can.
At which point we would just need a modified drawing because we would need to reference that in, in, in any decision that we would have, so.
Is that what you would like?
I mean, I would like to propose, other than that, I don't see the issue here.
Yeah, we can condition it, saying that the deck has to be in conformance of the front setback.
That's fine. Yeah.
Okay, so does someone want to make findings? Is that agreeable, Attorney Schilling?
Yeah, we're gonna move, we can move the deck, right, Ron?
Yes.
Yeah, that's agreeable.
Is that okay?
So, so if I understand what you're saying, you're saying that you'll, you'll put verbiage within this agreement that when we build that deck, it has to be with, has to conform to those setbacks?
Correct. But we're, we're approving the modification otherwise.
Okay, makes sense. I agree with that.
Makes sense? Go ahead. Yeah. Sorry. Uh, let me see here. Sorry.
With regard to special permit number 2023-013 Simpson trustee, modification of special permit number 2021-065. Sorry. For all special permits, the board is required to make general findings pursuant to 240-125C. The board should review the evidence presented by the applicant staff and members of the public, and after weighing such evidence is encouraged to articulate if any how the evidence contributes to each of the required findings. The proposed alteration expansions are not substantially more detrimental to the environment, community and/or historic character of the neighborhood than the existing building or structure. We find that, that it contributes to and respects the character and historical development patterns of the area and minimizes inconsistent redevelopment impacts to the historic and community character resources in the area. Protects and preserves scenic views and vistas and ways to the water, protects and improves natural resources, including but not limited to the barrier beach and groundwater and coastal water quality, and minimizes development and redevelopment impacts to the natural resources and ecosystems in this district. It's been shown that it will reduce the overlay in the 50-foot buffer. Protects human life and property from hazards of periodic flooding, preserves the natural flood control characteristics and the flood control function of the flood plain. The subject structure is not within a FEMA-designed flood zone. Is that correct? Okay. Those are my findings.
All right, so Mark has made a motion to approve 2023-013 with his findings. Do we have a second?
Conditions, second.
Do I have, all those in favor of moving the finding forward?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, Mark, do you have conditions?
I do.
Conditions, go ahead.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Like to put for suggested conditions number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and an additional seventh condition that modification of the site of the deck must conform with all setback requirements, both town and conservation.
All right, we'll take a vote on the conditions. All those in favor?
Is it all?
Those.
Sorry, go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I would note, and, and now that you have the existing special permit, the number four was worded a little bit different on the existing special permit. And you could read it, but it says something like, any changes would need to come back to the zoning board. Versus this new condition four says, this is full buildout. And, you know, having just sat through the last meeting and somewhat a layperson, I find this is full buildout is a hard hurdle to overcome, even if it's not what people mean. And I just don't know whether we could stick with the existing verbiage.
I think it still represents-
If we're sticking with the existing, then we'd be modifying, but what, I mean, what you have read in is that we're granting a, a new special permit, I think. Right?
Oh, because, because of the modification?
Are we granting a new special permit?
Are we allowed to add a condition?
So would you want to leave condition four in the existing?
I, I think it's still, it doesn't normally speak to how we put it anyway?
No, if there's, if they want to do more to the property that falls within as of right, why do they have to come back?
So the existing, the existing special permit says there shall be no further expansion of the structure, construction of accessory structures or impervious surface coverage on the lot unless approved by the zoning board of appeals. What's proposed is the proposed elements shall be represented in full buildout of the lot. Further site changes are prohibited without approval of the board.
Is that not saying the same thing?
I, I, yeah, it's, it's like hard in my mind. It says the same thing, but I just sat and listened to you guys for an hour and I went, wow.
And going to the-
I can see someone arguing full buildout means you should not ever come back to talk about anything.
I think that's a very fair question that he's proposing.
As you said, the special permits are lifetime.
So what do you, what's, what's your desire, Mark? This is your findings, your conditions?
Chairman, can I see the original?
Yeah, we can, I mean.
So number four originally says the applicant shall comply with the decisions and the conditions issued by the Barnstable Historic Commission and Conservation Commission, correct? The original permit?
Yeah, yeah.
Whereas now number four says?
No, 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 no.
It's a different, did I have the numbering wrong in the original?
Oh, it's number, number four.
Conditions here. So we were talking about, um, this one here?
Three is four and four.
Okay, so the numbers have changed, three and four. Gotcha, sorry, my fault, my fault. I apologize.
So, sir, can you read that?
Yep, so number three on the original special permit that was issued says there shall be no further expansion of the structure, construction of accessory structures or impervious surface coverage on the lot unless approved by the zoning board of appeals.
And that's the very reason why we're here.
Yep, so can that verbiage just be put into the new condition, number four?
I don't see why not. Yeah, sure. I don't see why not. Is that easier?
Is that agreeable?
Yeah.
Okay. And then lastly, number five on the new conditions, I'm sorry. So.
Where do we see that? That's, um. Yeah, but those, that's, um.
Yeah, number five of the new conditions talks about all mechanical equipment and so forth. So is it necessary in this particular case?
Yeah, I mean, it's a new, it was, this construction was built on the special permit, so I think so.
Associated with the dwelling, air conditions, like, okay, all right.
So just a quick question.
No, and we, we are going to do that anyway, so.
Just a quick question. So we're referencing the, the site plan proposed improvements on May 31 that will change.
I'm sorry, Mark, can you repeat that?
Just in the new, in the new conditions, we're, we're referencing number three, the site plan proposed improvements, May 31, 2023. We're, we're asking for a modification of that, of that drawing. Of the last-
With compliance.
Okay. If we add it as a seven, yes.
So we just have to show you a plan that shows where it's moved to?
You obviously have to submit that to town showing, showing the deck within compliance.
So three stands, but it's gonna, but with the exception of what is number seven, and number seven references those, we asked you about the setback.
We'll make it conform to the setback.
Okay.
Okay, so a vote on the conditions as described. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All is opposed? None. All right, so you have your special permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondence, we had none. Matters not reasonably anticipated. Our, our recommendations from Paul are with legal right now, and we'll wait to hear back with their response. Upcoming hearings, July 26, August 9 in person, and August 23 back on Zoom.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Second.
And we are all set. We're all set.